I'd like to call this meeting of the Board of Education to order. Chris, could you call the roll please? This is Detzel. Here. Mr. Harlow.
Here.
Mr. Heather.
Here.
Mr. Engel.
Here.
Would you all please join in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, everyone has received a copy of the regular meeting minutes for November 20th. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
So.
The move is second. Any corrections, additions? Chris? Motion passes five to zero. Okay, we'll go into our legislative meeting.
Thank you. A couple of things going on in Columbus right now that we should go over. One bill that's on our resume right now is Senate Bill 260, which will remove some mandates on school boards. That will be, I think, very helpful to us until we can reach agreement. Heard this agreement is going to be able to remove those mandates. And also, House Bill 200, it's also concerned because of the capacity to expand the voucher program. And I'm going here tomorrow and I'll just take notes there. House Vance is going to start taking testimony on the school funding system, which they've only been working on for twenty or so years now. So, we're excited. A lot of progress out there, maybe tomorrow, but we never know. So, just what people are saying, it's always good when they're talking about it outside of budget because budget time is not the time to be paying for school funding. There are other constraints on the system at that time. They spent the first six months of a odd number of year trying to pass an operating budget. Obviously, schools are going to be funded, but they don't want to kind of start over and create a huge new system. That's not the time to do it. It's like trying to run a play you've never played before at the state championship game. It's just not going to work. So, glad to chat the outside of that context.
Just real quick to let everybody know, since it's a little crowded up here this evening, I'd like to welcome Mark Gilbert and Joe Yashinara. They will be our two newly elected board members that will be sworn in in January. So, we've invited them tonight so they can sit with us, had a look over the viewer system and how we run our meetings online. So, we're a little tight up here. Okay, at this, we're going to move right into student achievement and liaison report. And I believe we have the Cardinal String Project.
I'll read a little bit about the Cardinal String. It's a small group of string players who rehearse after school and play alternative styles of string music, build tunes to rock, jazz, to pop, with a dose of holiday music in December. This group performs in the community and throughout the district on request. They have played for Santa Claus, ladies' luncheons, assemblies, business partners, and faculty staff events. They have an annual presence at the Farback Warner Nature Center Holiday Music Series. The students in this group represent two orchestras at Corrin High School. We have Molly Smith, senior violin. If you could raise your hand.
She's not here tonight. I'm her replacement.
Weneth Dumb.
Also not here tonight.
Two for two.
Haley Cook. Haley Cook, also not here tonight.
Aaron Kitefinger.
Yes!
And I apologize if your last name is a kitefingerer.
Yeah.
And then we have Ryan Kitefinger, Jacob Davis, Naham Casse, and that's a, correct me.
Naham Casa.
Naham Casse.
Casa. Casa.
Evan Fields, and Megan Gavick-Gilliam.
Gavick-Gilliam.
Gavick-Gilliam. And their leader is Ms. Jackson, who is an outstanding woman.
We have one more, Jingle Bell Rock. We just want to thank you for having us. We'd like to thank Ms. Jackson and all of you for being here. I know it's a busy coming year, and we really appreciate you coming in. It was great. It did heal everybody in that festive spirit now. So, wish all of you Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, and look forward to hearing you again. Thank you. Have a safe trip. Okay, now we'll move into the Bubba Tech update.
Yeah, I'd like to bring up Kristen Eveda, our supervisor from Bubba Tech, and highlight one more progress.
Good evening. So, excited to be here and to have the engineering program from Corrin High School here tonight. One thing about their tech that we continue to do is look for value add for our programs, not for the students at our local. Something that we've been adding to many of our different program operates has been additional alignment with college credit plus. I mean, the students are duly enrolled. We have many different partnerships, but Mr. Campbell has established a very special partnership with St. Clair. He's going to talk about the new opportunity for students that just started in the junior year, having now the opportunity to earn their associate's degree completely at Corrin High School. So, I'll come over to Mr. Campbell and his students.
Thanks, Mr. Detzel. I think we're just spending here to find students from the time of the eighth year as we're getting ready for exams next week and a half. To my left here, Randy Glasshaw is our senior CEO of our program. Nick Hall is one of our machine team leaders. And another senior, Alex Fisher down at the end. And then Jenny Wyde, who's one of our juniors that will be highlighted here tonight. Extraordinary students, and I gotta continue with, I still remain absolutely spoiled to have the opportunity to work with great kids in two great districts, now three educational institutions. Yeah, you should see my grade book. So, the program actually started, the new program actually started a couple of years ago when I started working with Robin Runtzner from Clifford. He came to me with a really innovative program that one of our business partners, Festo and Clifford, were working on. At the time, they called it a MAC, the McCutronics Apprenticeship Program. And we placed students after they graduate high school at the local company, Clifford being one of them, Festo being another, several other manufacturing in the greater Cincinnati-Northeast area. We placed students after they graduate high school in apprenticeship programs, Department of Labor approved. And through this, the students would go to Sinclair one day a week, of course, due campus in Mason. They would attend a one-day educational program at Festo, and then three days they're on the job at their employer record. So, those students were going to Sinclair one day a week. I've started to have meetings more and more frequently with Festo and Clifford, as well as the administrators at Sinclair. And they actually loved our kids so much that in the first cohort of, I think there was twelve students that they hired in at these local companies, seven of them were graduates of Corrin High School and our program in manufacturing and my engineering program. And so, those seven students out of the twelve had tremendous success. And so, Festo and the local company said, we want to do it again. So, they started a second cohort, and I have six out of the sixteen students placed in that cohort. So, thirteen out of twenty-nine, not bad, and they were for us, for our program placement. But I didn't want to stop there because this Festo program was awesome. Kids get two years in the apprenticeship program, they get paid three days a week, more and more than what the company wants. In one case, one of our students works at a company that's making seventeen dollars an hour all five days a week. They're paying him for the two days that he's in school also, and they're paying for his tuition. So, I thought, what a great thing, what a great deal for our kids to get a high school diploma, then a college education, and a job to them. And when they leave, they're going to be starting out in, oh, I don't know, I think they, the estimates were around twenty-two dollars an hour after they graduate from the apprenticeship program. Our first cohort will be graduating this year in their second year. But I didn't think that was even enough because a lot of our students in the past, I don't know, eight years for sure here, we've been competing with Sinclair grads, Cincinnati State grads for jobs in the marketplace, us with our career tech education, and them with their associate's degrees. And what I found was several of our students were actually getting the jobs over the Cincinnati State and Sinclair alumni graduates. So, I figured that I would meet with a few universities, really, you know, Moby Art through Ross Becker, you know, upward regions. And he said, you know, Dave, we've been wanting to pilot this program where students can actually earn a higher associate's degree while they're in high school. And I said, sign me up. Where do I go to get in? He said that, you know, they have to work through some issues with CCP and some of the other things. And so, I think through our work with Kristen, Darrell Hader, the Bubba Tech Northwest, we've really formed up this crazy idea that these students would actually be able to accomplish that. The students, no problem, they're chomping at the bit, they want to do it. A lot of the groundwork that Darrell and Kristen had to do, along with the other folks at Hamilton of the Bubba Tech, that we had to do to work this out, has been phenomenal with the amount of work that we have put on ourselves to do this, but we're going to start to see the success really grow. So, for instance, Jenny will be able to continue her work this year, earn twenty-five semester hours of credit at Sinclair through our college credit plus program that she doesn't have to pay for, right? So, twenty-five hours of core content engineering class. This degree that I'm working on is actually an Amed accredited mechanical engineering technology degree, an associate applied science, fully transferable to Miami Hamilton for their baccalaureate program in the plus two. So, Jenny will be able to earn twenty-five semester hours this year. Next year, another thirty semester hours that she'll be able to earn while taking classes for me as an approved adjunct for Sinclair, right at Corrin High School. So, it's a phenomenal opportunity. She'll get fifty-five hours of core content mechanical engineering technology. Phenomenal success for Jenny for twenty-four classmates that they'll be able to, should they meet all the requirements, continue to meet the class requirements, and continue to succeed in the classes. I didn't want to leave the seniors out, although they'll only be able to spend one year with us after we started this program. All twenty-three of my seniors are enrolled in the CCP program as well, so they're also going to earn their twenty-five hours, you know, twenty-five semester hours of college credit. So, a phenomenal opportunity for them, and we have still bailout opportunities, so to speak, because we still have the Festo-Clifford McCutronics Apprenticeship Program as one pathway to success. And of course, if the students don't want to go to that, we always have job placements at great companies in our community where the students could go straight into work without the need for college. So, number without the need to go immediately to college. So, when we say Bubba Tech programs are college and career ready, we mean it, and college and career current. So, our students are getting a phenomenal opportunity. Let's see, so pathways, careers, college credits, should we go for a bachelor's degree too? That may be a bit aggressive. So, I guess I'll paint this picture as we close, and we may have questions for some of our great students here. Seventeen-year-old high school graduate that you all will be reading the names of in a year and a half. You're also going to be accompanied by an administrator from Sinclair who will award their associate's degree at the same time. At the same time, at the other end of the stage, there'll be a Miami University Regional Campus admissions director accepting them for the plus-two program. So, by age nineteen, some of our students will have graduated with a baccalaureate degree in engineering technologies at age nineteen. I think that's phenomenal. And the cost, I think we calculated it out for non-Corin County resident, title resident non-Corin County at Sinclair, the tuition is on a hundred and forty-six dollars per credit hour. So, right there, I believe the fifty-five semester hours that we're saving them is roughly about eight thousand two hundred and fifty dollars or so if you didn't math quickly, or recall the math, about eight thousand dollars that they're going to earn for the fifty-five semester hours. Throw in the extra nine hours of academic core content they'll get, the CCP English, the CCP Polysonic, Political Science, and pre-tackulous classes, they'll be able to earn through Northwest sixty-four semester hours of college credit when they graduate is a huge accomplishment. So, I'll open it up, I guess, to questions that any of you might have for myself or my fine students. And yes, we're still on Roblox, that starts January sixth, so we've got this huge Roblox contest looming off in about three weeks, eight academic days is what I tell them, until we kick off this incredible first robotic season. And we'll be challenged tremendously by that as well.
Dave, I was actually down in Nashville at the ACT, Nashville Conference, and Festo was down there, their Nashville home office from New Jersey. And I was just telling them how pleased we are and, you know, give us some more apprenticeships, we love it, and they just, they're, they can do a great job. They knew about us, so that was, that was a good thing. So, yeah, it was very, very, very well done.
That's great leadership, because one thing that I've always wanted to do, since I started back here eight years ago, was to make sure this program was nationally recognized. I think we're getting it. I guess that would be more years of work to get there. So, thanks, that's great to hear that, too.
Awesome.
For the three seniors, what are your plans after graduation?
Well, mid-res in life, I've been talking to UC, and they don't actually accept Sinclair's credits, and then my admissions council has done that. So, I'm really full-hearted towards UC, and I actually want to pursue a baccalaureate degree, baccalaureate scholarship.
I've been accepted into Miami Oxford campus, so I'll be pursuing my mechanical degree.
And I was going to continue with Sinclair to get my associate's degree. And then I was going to go to Miami to get my bachelor's degree, and hopefully someone will hire me.
I'm sure they will.
And Jenny, do you, have you looked further ahead, what you think you might want to do?
Yeah, I want to go to Miami or UC, to Miami University, to get a transfer. But like, I've always wanted to go to UC, since I know a lot of fun to get to get an assist.
Okay, that's great. And then Dave, when you were talking about not only earning all those credits and saving that over eight thousand dollars, they're also earning money, but working currently.
Hopefully, well, yeah, so the students that'll get out, you know, the Festo apprenticeship, if they decide to opt into that, they'll be able to earn money through that. And we can always place students through the corporate workplaces as well, I think it'd be easier. So, yeah, so they'll have job in hand, degree in hand, and a lot of career education.
You know, when they take one of those apprenticeships, they go to Festo, and they go to college, and then they're working there, and then once they graduate, they have a job there for them.
They do sign a memorandum of understanding, they're going to work for two years at least for those companies to kind of prepay back the benefits they receive, pre-tuition and computers.
And what do they start them out at, somewhere like fifty, sixty thousand dollars a year?
I think about forty-five is about when they go with the two-year degree. And they have tuition benefits for the baccalaureate programs as well. Two of the students, Darrell Atul, who graduated last year, who's been at Festo now for the year, he is, two years from when he graduated, two years now, he'll graduate from the Festo apprenticeship this year, along with his six classmates in the dynamic. They will, they're actually talking about those folks getting a chance to go to the new Festo facility and have to have you for two years instead of their apprenticeship program. So, as apprentices, they're going to become the trainers over there and setting up the facilities for two years. So, that's one of the options. They have other options, too.
Sure.
So, what's your, what's your, for the students here, what's your parents' thoughts on this, sure, hopefully?
Linda, would you like to?
We think it's wonderful because, golly, having her come out and have with an associate's and a free associate's degree, she's working hard and she loves it. And I think, don't let that guy leave, that's what I'm telling you. He's one of the best teachers I've ever encountered. And my daughter loves, absolutely loves what she's doing at Corrin with Mr. Campbell.
How many, how many years does it take for them to get their bachelor's degree if they're working three days a week?
So, the Miami Regional campuses, the baccalaureate in electric mechanical engineering technology, if they call it plus-two program, specifically because the sixty-four semester hours of post-associate's degree work that they have to get generally takes about two years, but in the case when they're working full-time, which most of the kids, after they earn their associate's degree, will probably start working full-time, they'll go back to college part-ten key days. The regional campuses at Miami are spectacular of offering the degree, the baccalaureate degree program, both in NET and EMET, electric mechanical and mechanical. So, three years is a pretty good estimate if they're working full-time to finish out their baccalaureate degree.
How many stops?
Not at all. And if they're working full-time, most of the companies, hopefully, will have some sort of tuition reimbursement. So, again, one of my big questions is that... So again, one of my big questions is that college doesn't have to be at a huge cost to everybody, nor does it have to be a direct path for everyone right away. So there's lots of phenomenal opportunities that we can do to offset those costs of college tuition and give us access to a great diploma.
Yeah, it's incredible.
Yes, sir.
Yes? I was reading that one area of engineering that really is going to have tremendous growth is robotics. Now, being a robotics engineer, is that part of mechanical engineering or?
Yes, sir, it is. So a lot of schools split off as its own engineering program. Specifically, UC and Miami, as well as UD, they leave it in as part of the mechanical engineering programs. So still a viable pathway, but there are schools starting to splinter off into mechatronics and robotics, which typically, that means automation and control. So automated factories, automated plants, you still need technicians to design, build, upgrade, and modify the robots in the production lines. So yes, it's, robotics is growing, and another one is additive manufacturing, it's going to be a huge thing that you're going to hear with GE and several other companies in the area, starting to build additive machining, additive manufacturing, zero-waste manufacturing, that's coming down the pipe. So these kids are getting great, great introduction in that area as well.
I don't think I need to tell the board you, but you are very fortunate to have Mr. Campbell as a teacher, and you are right. I can remember when I was first on the board and Dave coming and presenting at the board, and he is just as enthusiastic now as he was all those years ago, and you all are benefiting from it. And there is so much behind the scenes. Kristen, we'd like to thank you, too. There's a lot, this just doesn't happen overnight, and it's not just magical that these colleges team up and the schools and everything else, and a lot of heart out to work, and want to thank both of you, because boy, our kids have amazing opportunities. So I'm going to wish the board the best of luck. And you're welcome to come back at any time and down the road and let us know what's going on and, you know, what you did at school, and we'd love to hear from you.
Next time we come by, they do like to bring some robots and demonstrate some artificial intelligence and some really cool sensors that these kids are working on, and put their technology in. As soon as we build our two competitive robots this year, we'll, we'll share yours off and break them off. But thank you, I think I'm just a cog in the wheel, and sometimes just a roadblock and obstacle to their future self. So I love it, it's great.
Dave, the first robotics kickoff date is January the?
Sixth, so the Saturday we get back from our fad those break, they'll be well-rested and ready to work. They only have six weeks to design and build their remote-controlled machine and, I should say robotic, because it's a fly operated autonomous. So it's six weeks to design and build, it'll be some long nights and some long days, but again, unfortunately, you have the resources with Butler Tech, our partners, Clifford and Procter and Gamble, it's really cool places. It's another one that we're going to drop the name on, because P&amp;G is going to be looking for some of our technicians to go work on, too, so you might have read up on that, the use of Butler Tech. So we're developing partnership with P&amp;G on a very similar apprenticeship that we have at Vesto. So it'll be cool, all sorts of fun stuff.
Come over January sixth, if you can, before you go.
Yeah, the game's going to be fun, they're calling it Power Up this year, the kids have no idea what it is yet, nor do I, but it's going to be a really exciting game this year, I believe.
Well, good luck to all of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for having me.
At this time, if you don't mind, this is Stephanie Keston, our Executive Director of Human Resources. She's been asked by past folks who have attended our board meetings to get an update on staffing. And as we've talked at the last three board meetings tonight, so I'll present it to Dr. Stephanie Keston.
Okay, thank you for the opportunity to present tonight, because I don't get in front of you much. I'm going to give you the shortened condensed totally version, though there was so much I wanted to share with you, so I'm going to share some staffing updates, certainly around demographics, which I don't think will be surprising, as we've heard from Dr. Terny and Dr. Johnson's report. But I do want to give you more information than if anyone ever asked for, so bear with me. Is this my paper? Okay, so first, I want to talk about our diversity in staffing. Okay, so we're staffing demographics, and this is this year's data, 2017, 18. Ninety-one percent of the Northwest local school district certified staff is Caucasian or white. Certified staff includes all of our teachers, all of our administrators, anyone who holds a certified license. Three percent of our Northwest staff is of minority status. I did not break that out because some of the, some of the minority categories were so small, but so I left it at three percent. If you look at our classified staff, now our classified staff includes all of our custodians, our bus drivers, our classroom aides, our cafeteria assistants, our maintenance staff. Eighty-four percent of those staff call it the white category, Caucasian. Sixteen percent of those are of minority status. I want to compare that to what our student demographics are. Now, this is last year's data on our student demographics. Fifty-three percent of the students enrolled in Northwest local school district are white. Approximately 47% are of minority status. And we did break this out for you, so 28% of students in the Northwest local school district are black, African-American. 10.5 are considered multiracial. 3.5 are Hispanic. 3.5 are Asian. And then 1% of students enrolled are considered others. And so these are self-reporting from the families. So a little bit different, as you see, and I think as I go through the slides, you will see that this is not just a Northwest trend, it is a national trend, and it's one that everyone is concerned about, and so that's why we bring the information to you, and some ideas of how we hope to attack this issue and how they're doing it nationally as well. So national statistics and statistics. According to the National Center for Educational Statistics, 82% of American teachers are white. 6.8% are African-American, and 10.6% are considered other minorities. So they're either national. Ohio, 93% of teachers are white, 4% are African-American, and 1.1%. So you see that Northwest local school is very, is very consistent with what Ohio is, but as a national average, obviously, we are trending higher on the Caucasian in Ohio. Ohio diversity. So both national statistics and Ohio statistics indicate minority teachers tend to go to the big urban districts. So in Ohio, 61.5% of African-American teachers are found in only 10 school districts of the 612. So Cleveland, Long Beach, Cincinnati, Dayton, East Cleveland, Cleveland Heights, Tropewood Lake, Madison, and Shaker Heights. So those districts take the majority of the teachers that are African-American. And I do have a slide coming up that will show you perhaps why that is, that is true. I want to talk a little bit about hiring trends for Northwest local school district. So I had the new hires here from the last five school years. So for this year, we had a total of 101 classified new hires. We had 59 classified new hires, or certified new hires, and for a total of 160. You can see the numbers as they go down. One thing I do want to point out is as the years go on, there were, there was a year, and I believe it was 1516, when we had a mass exodus of our certified, or classified staff. The rules changed in STRS, teachers had to get out, or the laws were changing around their retirement, and so we didn't have a lot of certified. That's here, we had 104 that left us. Last year, which would have been 1617, was the year that classified rules changed for retirement. So we had a lot of classified retire in 1617. But only about 28% of our replacements are retired. So that means we're having a lot of people that aren't necessarily retiring, they are resigning for one reason or another. So anything other than official retirement through STRS, which is the state teachers' retirement, or the state employees' retirement system, any other reason they're leaving is considered a resignation, not a retirement. And I do have some slides that are coming up to kind of explain what we're, what we know about the folks that are leaving us. Okay, so here's a national trend. The number of minority teachers in the nation has doubled over the past few decades. So that's the good news. So we had about 325,000 in the late 1980s, we've gone up to about 660 in 2014. However, these increases have not kept pace with the student population that's shifting faster than the adult population. So our student populations are shifting all over the nation, but our teachers' turnover is not happening quick enough to keep up with the student population. In the late 1980s, minority students were truly a minority, at about 30% of the population. Data from 2016 indicates this has significantly changed. Nationwide, now in, from 2016, minority students make up roughly 50% of all public school students. And minority teachers, however, make up just 18% of the teacher workforce. So this is a national crisis, if you will. Every human resources magazine, every human resources article that comes out is about diversifying their workforce, and how do we go about doing that? So projections for the student population in 2060, as estimated by the Census Bureau, indicate that students of color will comprise approximately 66% of the public school population. What this research went on to say is that the population is changing, but this only accounts for public school population. So the private school population, the burghew school population, all of those students are not figured into this calculation. So basically, what it says is that if we can't be different, if we can't be more successful in changing the conditions, it is expected that the diversity, the diversity gap between black students and black teachers will remain the same, but the diversity gap between Hispanic students and Hispanic teachers will increase. Okay? So we, we have a problem, so we've got to get into solutions. Here's the harsh reality, in order to close the diversity gap, we would have to have about, we'd have, a million white teachers would have to exit the profession, 300,000 black teachers, and 600,000 Hispanic teachers, just to close the gap at this current time. So that's a pretty, pretty harsh reality for the nation. So what research says about teachers? I know this seems to be skipping around, but I am coming to a, to a, I'll wind it up for you. Okay, so it says, among the in-school bachelors, teachers have the greatest direct impact on student learning. And we know that, the research proves it day in and day out, the people who make the difference are the teachers. Effectively, retaining teachers is crucial to make sure there are enough well-prepared and committed teachers to staff all of our nation's schools, and that our classrooms have the time, our classroom teachers have the time and experience to effectively serve all students. I didn't put the research citation up there, and I apologize, I know better. But we know every day that who makes the difference in our classroom are our teachers, and so it's extremely important to us to make sure we get the most qualified, well-trained staff in front of our students. So how does diversity among your workforce help? Okay, so I did a lot of research on trying to figure out what the research is saying about having a diverse population. We know it's important, we can see it's important, we hear our students, we hear our staff say it's very important, but what is the research saying? So the research referred to high expectations, and what the research found was that students of color, if they had teachers of color that were similar to them, that looked like them, they felt like they pushed them hard, that they required them to explain their answers, not just give up when the work gets hard, and except nothing less than their whole effort. Okay? This was especially strong in the black students and black teachers. They felt as if the black teachers had higher expectations than any other teachers in their prior history. There was a second benefit called role modeling. It suggests that minority students have a benefit of seeing the same face color in their classroom, that they help, help inspire them to become more of what they be. So if they see a white face in the classroom and they happen to be a student of color, that that isn't necessarily a connection for them, that when they see African-American teachers in their classroom, they, it helps them to inspire to be greater in what they do. So this is important, because research is showing, especially this is the next bullet, that black females, assigned to a black female teacher, say they think more about going to college because of their teachers. And that is so important, and that, I think, is what we heard from this Dr. Johnson and Dr. Terny's report, is that I want to see someone of color, I want to see someone who looks like me in the classroom. The last benefit that they talked about is culture understanding, okay? And students assigned to identically similar teachers say their teachers notice if they don't understand the topic. So they're reading body language differently than, let's say, perhaps a white teacher would in their classroom, that they're reading their body language. They, their teachers are constantly checking with them and rechecking with them to make sure they understand. That this is more of a soft filler, if you will, that the teacher is noticing when they don't understand, going back and reteaching, and teaching, and teaching, and teaching until they do get it. So it's another benefit. Teachers of, or students that are assigned to diverse teachers might be more likely to feel cared for and happy in a class when the student, when the teacher looks like them. There was a lot of reporting, and obviously, a lot of this is hard to measure, it's student perception and student survey results, but it also talks about that black males, and for black males, the teacher, if the teacher was of color, they felt as if they had more control over the classroom, which I think is huge, that they actually feel as if the teacher has more control if they're a teacher of color. So that's for blackmail conception. And the, and the happy in that they'll care for is that when they walk in and they see someone that looks like them, it's a natural connection, and they feel more cared for than perhaps a teacher that's not of their color. Okay, so here are some challenges with teacher retention. I'm going to give you some national statistics, and then I want to talk to you about what I have found out in working with teachers as they're exiting Northwest local school districts. In Title I schools, which serve more low-income students, the turnover rates are 50% higher than teachers who work in non-Title I schools. And this is a really important statistic, because we have a lot of Title I schools in our district, and so we know that that's hard work. We know that that's hard work, and we know that the turnover is going to be higher. And so that will inform our decision-making as we begin staffing new buildings and staffing for positions that are available in the new buildings. Math and science teachers serving low-income students' turnover rates are 70% higher than their counterparts in more affluent areas. So we're always talking about math and science, how it's really hard to staff those positions. And now we have some statistics and some data that shows that it's even tougher when you have a lower-income population in lower-income schools. Also, the exit rates are 70% higher for students, for teachers in schools serving the largest concentration of students of color. So regardless of their Title I schools, if there are lots of students of color in that building, it's harder to keep the teachers in those buildings. The national turnover rate in the U.S. is 18.9% for minority teachers and 15% for white teachers. And the Center for Educational Statistics said that 54% of beginning teachers leave the profession within five years. So I've often, you know, wondered why it seems like we have these hiring rates, and we're not the only ones in the city that are, have high hiring rates, where we are replacing regularly. It's been five years. It seems like just when you get up and running and rolling, staff are deciding to leave the profession. And I do have some reasons why they're leaving the profession. Here's one of them. 91% of millennials expect to stay in a job for less than three years. So the 30-year veterans that we have, the 33, would really need to celebrate them, because it's not, the millennial attitude anymore is that they will leave a job within three years. That means they would have 15 to 20 jobs over the course of their working lives. And so we're seeing this shift not only in the teaching profession, but all over, that people are no longer jumping in and spending lots of time in corporations and/or organizations. Job hopping isn't the new normal. So why are they leaving the profession? The number one thing is salary. A bachelor or an education degree earns an average of 17% less than another, another bachelor's degree. So there's the financial aspect of it. Teachers were more, more than 20%, I'm sorry, that's, that's a really low, were more than 20% more likely to stay after starting salary was over $40,000. So they actually did a study, and if they started over $40,000, and this is from 2015, which is several years old, they were more likely to stay. Over 50% indicated salary was the reason they were leaving. Now, just for- Now, just for your reference, just this year, we were able to offer in two thousand seventeen eighteen thirty-eight thousand dollars for a first-year bachelor's graduate. And you just heard students talking about coming out with an associate's degree, making forty-five upwards, upwards in the forties. So we are just now, we're not even to the forty thousand dollar mark yet. So that is a struggle for us as a school district. There are some other reasons. Jobs were not available, there's sort of cautionary accountability measures, and unfair or unequal, or unfair or unequal, this is all of the accountability that's come down through student growth measures, through ODE. So that was something that chased people off. Lack of mentoring and support from leaders or their colleagues, so that mentorship those first couple of years is key. And family obligations was ten percent of the respondents. Now, this was national data. I did exit interviews, approximately twenty-five percent of our leaders completed an exit interview within the last three years, which is not a great turnout and not a great response rate from our folks who tend to leave. What I've learned in the profession in human resources is that people don't wanna burn bridges. So unless they're really high or really low, they don't fill out the exit, the exit survey. They don't wanna talk about it. If they do talk about it, there are some reasons that they tell you they're leaving. And so here are the things that people are leaving our district for. Salary was higher, and more four-year shares were granted elsewhere. Now, many of you who've been on the board understand that when we negotiated this last time with the union, we were able to get out a key component of the contract. The contract did say up until this, this summer, that we could not grant years that our teachers were on a salary freeze. So for everyone who came in, if they had five years, or let's say if they had eight years' experience, I had to subtract the three years that our teachers were on a freeze. And so I could only grant them five years. So match the deduction of the years with the lower income or the lower salary rate anyway, and we were non-competitive. And so oftentimes, people, people left us because they could go elsewhere and get granted those years. We can grant up to ten years with experience. So I could grant seven, another district could grant ten. Okay? So that was a big reason other people were leaving. The benefit package is something else that we aggressively attacked in our last negotiations with the union. We wanted to look at our benefit package, how could we make it more attractive to our staff and to our, well, the salary, I should say, is the number one thing we attacked. We were able to get the years back, we were able to grant those years, we were also able to give a four percent or four percent base increase on the base, which were, or three point seven five, four and four, which really helped our salary. I can, I'm happy to report that I only had two people turn me down this year when I gave them the salary that we were offering. So that is very different from the past, when we had multiple people saying, I can't accept that rate of pay. Family obligations is always there. I mean, we always have families who need to leave, or teachers who need to leave, or staff need to leave because they have family obligations. Promotion was something else. We had a lot of folks leave us because they were taken for promotion, not that they had a lack of promotion here, but that they received an assistant principalship or something else in another district. And the expectations were more attractive. So we have changed over the years. We do student growth measures, we do SLOs, this year we're using shared attribution. Some people quoted the number of days that they had to work was lower in a new district versus our district. So those are all things that our, our staff, instead of leaving us for, and all things that we are looking at. I can definitely say that we've looked at the benefits package and the salary, and we're trying to be more competitive in those areas, but we also have to look at the rest of them and how we can manage those. Here are some Ohio statistics that I found pretty overwhelming. So in two thousand twelve, thirteen, there were twenty thousand students enrolled in preparation programs throughout the state of Ohio. If you look at fourteen fifteen, it's down to fourteen thousand eight hundred. So it's six, basically a six thousand dollars, a six thousand person drop over those years. The bottom is how many people actually complete the program. And this is all in the field of education. So we had six thousand complete in two thousand twelve, thirteen. We only had fifty-seven hundred complete in fourteen fifteen. Okay? This is the most recent data that's available on the website. So it's a little outdated, but it does show you the decrease in the number of people who are actually going into the field of education. This is total enrollment by gender. So you see ten thousand, both being, about ten thousand are female, thirty-eight hundred are male. Again, over here under race and ethnicity, and this, this is again fourteen fifteen tab, we had sixty-one, those numbers are small, but sixty-one American Indians, four Alaskan natives, a hundred and twenty-five Asians, eight hundred and fifteen black, thirteen native Hawaiian, twelve thousand white, two hundred and eighty-one to more races, and three hundred and forty-nine Hispanic, Latina, and race. So if you look at those numbers, and you say, okay, there are six hundred and twelve school districts in the state of Ohio, we are all competing for a very low number of students, very low number coming out by race and ethnicity. This is another interesting bit of information. These are the top graduates, and I sorted it by those that were the highest in the black category. So Cleveland State University is graduating a hundred and thirty-eight black students in fourteen fifteen. Six hundred and twelve school districts are trying to get those students. So now you see why that Cleveland area, there are a lot of people in the Cleveland area, that's why they're taking most of those students. Only Grand State University is the second, one hundred and twelve. Notre Dame College of Ohio, and surprisingly to us, Xavier University is the fourth in the state of Ohio. Darryl who teaches, Mr. Dayer, who teaches at Xavier, was surprised by that as well. So the information that this gives us, historically, black university, Central State University is graduating thirty-four. Okay? And this is the field of education. So you can see the kind of the crisis that we're having in not only who's coming into the education world, the less, the lower number of people, but now we have, when we break it down into our races, you see that we, we, there aren't a lot out there. Okay? And so it's going to really change this information here, which is the first time I've ever seen a website where you can go, you can click on any state, and you can see this demographic information for every state, to see actually where our graduates are coming from, and perhaps where we need to strategically do our staffing and our visiting to different types of career fairs. Typically, we go to Xavier, who's one of ours, Miami University is another one, but as you see, Miami is on there. I mean, it's, it's actually in the top, there are fifty-two providers of education in the state of Ohio, as far as colleges are concerned. So we do have some bigger numbers, but they're still pretty small numbers in comparison to the amount of jobs that are available and all the districts that are looking to diversify their staff. So here are the opportunities. Working with Dr. Johnson and Dr. Turry, we want to create a task force to design a recruitment plan. We want to conduct focus groups with our minority staff members to determine a list of selling points for the district. So what would bring folks here? If we know they're gonna go to these ten school districts, if that were, if that's the highest percentage of folks that are going to these large districts, what can we do? How can we sell ourselves as a place to come? Okay? I think the best group to get that information from is the minority staff members we already have here. What do they see as, as opportunities? What do they see as a benefit for working here? Increasing recruiting from the providers, we have the greatest percentage of minority candidates. So when you see me traveling to Cleveland, it'll be to hopefully target a group of folks that would might be interested in coming to Cincinnati. Okay? Although we know Cleveland does pay higher, I do have stats from Cleveland, that they are, they are consuming a lot of those folks. And in Pennsylvania, they're, they're taking a lot of folks from Cleveland State as well. Create a recruiting team that is diverse to attract diverse candidates and take them to the recruitment fairs. This came out in the research all over and from our local friends in the HR field, is that they're actually taking candidates that are, that are diverse, that because even in an interview situation, just as the kids, they wanna see a face of color. So what can our minority staff, whether they're in HR, teachers, any profession in our district, can they go to our recruiting fairs and help us to actually seek out candidates that might look more like them? Grow your own. We want to begin to recruit future teachers, and I believe they used to have a, what was it called?
Teacher Academy.
A teacher academy, they're in the past, they no longer have that, but the research is saying that you have to grow your own. You have to promote, you have to get folks and students, just like we had our engineering students, get them involved early, and help them begin to take that step towards being a teacher. And Darryl had mentioned Sinclair, and Darryl, do you wanna talk briefly about what you are working with with Sinclair?
Yeah, Butler Tech is actually, Butler Tech is actually sunsetting their teacher preparation program, so we're working with Sinclair, who is a college credit plus provider that we use in the district at both our high schools, to see if there's a way to have some of our own high school teachers certified through Sinclair as college credit plus teachers to start building our own teacher academy within our schools, to start making that an attractive, viable profession for students within our schools.
You know, Darryl, the reason why Butler Tech stopped doing the teacher academy is because kids weren't wanting to become teachers. That's the problem in a nutshell.
And we were hoping if we had it within our buildings, with our teachers promoting it, and the kids already know the teachers, that through those relationships, we might be able to do a better job of recruiting and filling some of those pathways.
So that, that would be a great way to begin growing our own and encouraging our own staff, or, I'm sorry, our own students to come back to the Northwest Oklahoma School District. Yeah?
I saw, a couple times ago, when we saw the, you know, the candidates in the classroom who were saying so high, and we're thinking, I noticed you seemed less than up there, and it was surprising, because we had Autobahn, you know, Ashland, that's my name, and I grew up near Autobahn, Tri-Pac, I still go back to my mom's house, so.
Well, Autobahn's there, eighteen.
I would take her, I was surprised, I was totally surprised.
Yeah.
And it's not something that's really the first of its place.
No, and I, I think people would, might say that about several other up there. I really thought Central State would be higher.
Right. As, as we're, anyway, I go to, you know, Cleveland, only three, we're six more hours away. Have, I would just suggest the Kentucky, I don't, I was very, Kentucky, Indiana's about so much, I have my, my plus surprise, the Kentucky, okay? We build.
So we, we want to create mentorships, both in and out of school for new staff members. So how to connect ours, let's say we do get someone who wants to be a transplant from Cleveland, how do we connect them to not only staff in the building? We do, I think we do a nice job of assigning mentors in the buildings, but how do we connect them to the outside world? How do we connect them to the local churches? How do we get them connected to the community so that they feel accepted, part of the community? So maybe looking at some partnerships and some mentoring ship there. Continue to monitor our salary and benefit package to remain as competitive as possible. Obviously, that's always on our radar, and obviously, we're a school district, and, you know, we're, we're subject to levies and those types of things, but continue to monitor that and see how we can change it, tweak it, to give more here, less here, whatever we need to do to make sure we're competitive. Think about compensation packages, maybe small interest loans for startup one school year. We have one, one of the things our union brought up with that, because we, we can't pay anymore because of pay cycles, they're getting paid the first time in September. We're gonna bring people down here, let's say from Cleveland, maybe having this, working with our credit union, see if we can get some, you know, some interest-free loans or something to help people to, to bridge the gap between a move, similar to what big corporations do, even if they're more like that. Moving makes sense, and signing bonuses or incentives to stay at least a given number of years. All things that we could possibly look at, that had been very successful in the corporate world, we're getting to the place in schools now where instead of them coming to us, we're gonna have to go to them, and we're gonna have to sell ourselves to them. So what questions do you have? I know that was a lot of information in a very short period of time, but I wanted to give you the whole picture, but to say to you, on the, on the front end, we understand that we have a diversity gap between our students and our staff, and it's our goal to staff our classrooms. We know how important teachers are, to staff our classrooms with the most qualified and best candidates. We need to do a better job of taking a look at our diversity gap and seeing how we can fill our open positions with faces of color to match our student population. But it's not an easy task. We don't have a lot of resources, when I say human resources, resources out there graduating from our schools. So I think the whole profession right now is a little bit in a crisis. We're looking at a teacher shortage, they say, in the next fifteen years, where we're gonna have a teacher shortage, and so we all need to do a better job of settling our profession, but then once we get folks here, how do we keep them here is the key. And it's all for our students, to make sure that we have the best in the most talented, most classroom.
I think the main thing is you gotta pay more money. They're not gonna, they're not gonna come down here, if I can go to another district and make another ten thousand dollars, why would I stay?
And if you traditionally.
I mean, you multiply that out over thirty years, that's a lot of money that you're leaving on the table if you don't, and, you know, 'cause I've talked to quite a few teachers that have left our district, and I would say ninety-nine percent of it is, well, I can go and do the same job there, same amount of days, you know, and I'm making ten to twelve thousand dollars more.
And one of the things I wanted to put on here, I could've spent two hours talking here about this, was the comparison of salaries in these top ten districts, and what their bachelor zero experiences pay, it's drastically higher, and I think they understand, yes, and they probably understand, they have a tough population that is a tougher population to work with, you saw the numbers around, statistics around Title I schools, they understand that they have to raise their salaries in order to get people to come, and all of those, those ten school districts, starting salaries are extremely high, but all of that requires money.
Stephen, you wanna just make sure I saw and heard this right? He said that after five years, fifty-four percent of all teachers left the profession? That is an incredible number.
Yeah, that's a crazy number. And it, you know, I, I don't wanna stand here and pontificate on what I think the reason is. I think more hands-on experience for teachers while they're in college, those internships, those things to actually teach them what the work is like, because I think everyone wants to be a teacher when they're a child, and then everybody teaches their dolls and, you know, or their siblings. But once you get into the classroom, and then accountability, has, I think, in many ways, has chased people off from the profession, because they know they're gonna make seventeen percent less on average than another bachelor's, they have these accountability measures. So I think colleges need to do a better job at doing some of that pre-work for us. I think that would help them next year. But yes, it is, it's, could be considered now a faster profession. Kinda has it, our students, which is a good name, they're getting more and more opportunities, but it looks like that, you know, too showing them the money, and that's unfortunate. But I still think, I still think that there are enormous opportunities to draw for and part of students back into the profession with passionate teachers. You know, I would hope that our engineering teacher that was up here, his passion for, would bring kids back, but it all comes down to what he can make financially work for your family. Any other questions or comments? Our reports available, if anyone wants any copies of anything, I'd be happy to send it to you, because I've got over the lot.
One of the first parts of the committee's Urban Culture University meeting will be to work on recruiting for this upcoming school year. And, you know, money is a key part of it, but staff morale's a huge part of it, making feel, feeling like you're a valued employee, having people recognize you. And you can't make up money for what hasn't happened for the past twenty-five years. That's what's got it in this place. It wasn't one year or two years of business. So we've gotta figure out how to do that, we've gotta start internally, build from within, get some of our students, used to be future teachers of America, along with what Darryl was talking about, but if we can tie some CCB classes around it and start actively recruiting kids, providing them hands-on experiences where they can go and practice teaching lessons in our middle schools, our elementarys, that really opens up the door. And you know, and we'll say one thing, those engineer, or those kids standing there, yeah, they're gonna make forty thousand dollars a year. Well, I have a mechanical engineer, he gets ten days vacation and seven holidays, so he gets seventeen days off. Our teachers work on a hundred and eighty-two days and get fifteen sick leave days. Not a bad salary for a hundred and eighty-two days of work. a bad salary for a hundred and eighty-two days of work.
If we do bring people from outside of Cincinnati, I don't feel, I'll have to go to high school. Because, um, I can't, I can't, I'm not my people. Feel awful, you know, especially if they can't help, so.
Okay, we'll move on to reports from employee organizations, anything for certificate or license? Classified? Okay. Any reports from school-related organizations? I have not received any requests for community comments.
Right, we will start with our fiscal consent item, financial report at the treasurer, November. Treasurer and superintendent recommend the board of education approve the financial reports as listed.
Second.
It's been moved in second, are there any questions? Motion passes five to zero.
Next item is certificated licensed personnel retirements and resignations. Superintendent recommends board of education approve the certificated license personnel retirements and resignations as listed.
So moved, second.
Moved in second, any questions regarding classified return to resignations?
There is one bus driver on there, Mary Palmer, who we've talked about, many years of service, she's been with us for a long, long time, and she, she was one of those employees when she came in, if you didn't go out in the lot, or you didn't go out in the lounge, or somewhere where she was going, you may not see her all year. She just did her job, she came in, she got it done, she had good relations with her students and her parents, and she did a great job for us.
Motion passes five to zero.
Next item is classified retirements and resignations. Superintendent recommends board of education approve the classified retirements and resignations as listed.
So moved, second.
Moved in second, any questions regarding classified return to resignations?
There is one bus driver on there, Mary Palmer, who we've talked about, many years of service, she's been with us for a long, long time, and she, she was one of those employees when she came in, if you didn't go out in the lot, or you didn't go out in the lounge, or somewhere where she was going, you may not see her all year. She just did her job, she came in, she got it done, she had good relations with her students and her parents, and she did a great job for us.
Motion passes four with one inspection.
Next item is a fiscal item, authorization to file a modified tax budget for the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen fiscal year. Treasurer and superintendent recommend the board of education approve the item as listed.
So moved, second.
Moved in second, are there any questions regarding the modified tax budget? Yes. Motion passes five to zero.
Next item is authorizing the advance of tax monies for the Hamilton County, Ohio auditor. Treasurer recommends board of education approve the fiscal items as listed.
So moved, second.
Moved in second, any questions? Okay, Chris. Motion passes five to zero.
Next fiscal item is approval of new fund, three hundred dash nine four zero eight Colrain High School Winter Guard. Treasurer and superintendent recommend the board of education approve the new fund as listed.
So moved, second.
It's moved in second, are there any questions regarding the new fund? Motion passes five to zero.
Next item is approval of another new fund, three hundred dash nine four zero nine CHS Winter Percussion. Treasurer and superintendent recommends board of education approve the new fund as listed.
So moved, second.
Moved in second, are there any questions regarding the new winter percussion? Motion passes five to zero.
Next item is debt and now certificates over three thousand dollars. The superintendent treasurer recommends board of education authorize the payments over three thousand dollars requiring a debt and now certificate as listed.
So moved, second.
Moved in second, any questions regarding the debt and now certificates? Motion passes five to zero.
Next item is a general business item, resolution for water line easement Taylor Elementary. Superintendent recommends board of education approve the resolution for water line easement at the new Taylor Elementary School as listed.
So moved, second.
Moved in second, questions?
Yeah, Chris, they're hooking that into Springdale Road, correct. We, we obviously had trouble, we were trying to hook that house for transportation, so originally, the water line was supposed to go back to Marino, but due to electric lines and existing water lines, they couldn't connect there, so they had to run back out to Springdale, so it will basically follow the, the existing drive leading back to Taylor. Is there any way to hook it to that? For the house, for the house to, possibly house to take.
We tried the best we could to connect to the neighborhood, because that was a big cost savings, and they were not allowing it.
So it's just weird to go that way to bring the, the system and hook to that house is one of its last legs, the savings. We can take a look there. I, I just think, you know, it would be a cost savings if we just took out the door.
They're very particular about how you tap it.
All I know.
Been down there before.
Okay, anyone else? Motion passes five to zero.
Next item is donations to Northwest Upper School District, clever praises for kids, donation of various student materials to Northwest Upper School District valued at twelve thousand three hundred and nine dollars seventy-two cents. TV products, donation of four hundred and eighty-one t-shirts for White Oak Middle School valued at two thousand four hundred and five dollars. Superintendent recommends board of education approve the donations to Northwest Upper School District as listed.
So moved, second.
Moved in second, any questions or comments?
I'd like to thank them for their donations.
I'll take that. Okay, Chris. Motion passes five to zero, thank you.
Next item is vendor contracts. Superintendent treasurer recommends board of education approve the vendor contracts as listed.
So moved, second.
Moved in second, on the vendor contracts, any questions? Motion passes five to zero.
Next item is certificated licensed personnel items. Superintendent recommends that board of education approve the certificated licensed personnel items as listed.
So moved, second.
Moved in second, questions regarding the certificated licensed personnel? Motion passes five to zero.
Next item is classified personnel items. Superintendent recommends board of education approve the classified personnel items as listed.
So moved, second.
It's been moved in second, are there any questions regarding classified personnel? Motion passes five to zero.
Next item is curriculum and instruction item is extended field trip, Colrain High School show park, the request and permission to take fifty-seven students for competition in Fenton, Ohio on January twenty-seventh, twenty-eight, no school will be missed. Superintendent recommends board of education approve the extended field trip as listed.
So moved, second.
It's been moved in second, and I'd like to wish them good luck, and hope that they don't get snow weather.
It's about the time of year that you need to go to Florida.
It's the worst, it's been, I think, one year.
Motion passes five to zero.
Next item is student services, extended athletic field trip, annual CHS girls' basketball holiday tournament trip to St. Francis Sales High School in Columbus, Ohio, for the center of birth. Superintendent recommends board of education approve the Colrain High School girls' basketball athletic field trip to Columbus, Ohio as listed.
So moved, second.
Moved in second, want to wish them good luck in their tournament, anyone else? Motion passes five to zero.
Next item is our two, or another extended field trip request, Colrain High School swim team will travel to Canton, Ohio for the swim team meet at the pool, first state qualifiers won't compete, but it's in the pool. It's in the fifteen, it's sixteen.
In Canton, that water would be pretty hard.
That's why I delayed, I was reading this before, that no school will be missed. Superintendent recommends the board of education approve the Colrain High School swim meet athletic field trip at the pool as listed.
So moved, second.
Moved in second, we want to wish you with good luck in their pool.
Same one.
Motion passes five to zero.
Next item is our two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen district calendar. We have taken time to develop this calendar, we sent out a survey to the teachers to get their feedback and input, we have worked with our builder, Megan and Stanca, still on time to start school August two thousand eighteen. School will start August twenty-first, and it will end before Memorial Day, so, we also shared this with PTA presidents, and we've gotten all the feedback that was required, and most were in favor, I would say, large majority, and so this fits our needs, it stays current of what we're trying to do, getting more days of instruction prior to testing, so, we are putting it up for approval. So superintendent recommends board of education approve the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen district calendar as listed, and Mark and Joe, just for you, we send, we release the board meeting and have discussions and send things out prior to the meeting, so you don't find out about it the first time tonight, so, they've seen the calendar and seen what we've suggested.
Got no questions?
So moved, second.
Okay, it's been moved in second, are there any questions or comments?
Just to let you know too, I know, this is hard work getting this calendar all together, and I could say, I knew that the administration does a great job, they show it to the PTA presidents for them to go over it too, so, there's a lot of input into getting these dates, and we appreciate that our building, our community's on schedule, things like this.
Motion passes five to zero.
Next item is deal of board policy revision, policy eight five ten, Columbus, superintendent recommends board of education approve the deal of board policy revision as listed.
So moved, second.
It's been moved in second, any questions or comments? Motion passes five to zero.
The next item is a resolution regarding support of Senate Bill two sixteen. Last week, there was a chance for those who had opposition to House Bill two sixteen to speak at, at Columbus, Wednesday will be the chance for supporters. We, as a group of superintendents in Hamilton County, decided to get, or talk to our boards about passing a resolution of support for Senate Bill two sixteen. Many decisions regarding teacher assignment, student assessment, teacher evaluation, and student access to college level courses should be properly made at local level. Right now, it's not that way, mandates are pushed out for funding to support the mandates, so we're basically being told what to do because of legislatures, and what they feel is important for them. The whole bill is to return local control to the boards. What it's asking you to do is to support Senate Bill two sixteen, I think it's going to go through to an extent, it is going to have some amendments, when your state superintendent, who is part of our group, goes up and goes around the entire state, meets with all of us, gathers our input, asks us to take surveys, and then he gets up there and bashes the bill, once it gets up there, that caused a lot of problems, this bill is sponsored by Senator Matt Huffman, he disputed everything that the superintendent said, characterization of the bill, same dozens of superintendents work with students every day and help draft this, our teachers are the ones working with students, they know better than the board of education for the state of Ohio, who Senator Huffman will tell you, a lot of them get their feedback from local legislators, want them to do, and big companies. He also said this is a result not only of a ten-month review of a variety of superintendents, because it was, it was a, basically a dog and pony show by the superintendent, going around and gathering feedback and input, not only were they at public school settings, they're also at the upper tech meeting where kids got word last year, when we went up to see the young man who was the president, they were talking to him and giving feedback on what they needed to see, so, this is a resolution that will support Senate Bill two sixteen, and I've talked to you and explained to you, we wanted to get a resolution to not be, so we forward it to the Senate.
Make a motion?
Yes.
Okay, so moved, second.
And a motion in a second, are there any other questions regarding the Senate Bill two sixteen resolution?
I'm just going to abstain because it's going to be in flux, and things are going to change after all, so, I'll just abstain.
Motion passes four with one inspection.
All right, next item is general business, redistricting new elementary schools, so, Chris, if you could put that map up, please. All right, so I just wanted some talking points on what we're doing. We currently have five elementaries, and we want to fill three new elementary buildings. Our new elementaries are designed to hold nine hundred students, the best way to think about that is you have grades K one, two, three, four, and five, six sections at each grade level, twenty-five kids per class, that's how you get to the nine hundred. We want to make sure that when we fill the three buildings and go from the five to three, that we follow the economically disadvantaged numbers, so that there is not a discrepancy in dividing the kids up, and how it affects our Title I funding. Just for your general knowledge, Wyco Elementary is the highest, or second highest free and reduced lunch at seventy-one percent, Taylor is the highest at seventy-two, P R E is then third at sixty-seven, Struble is fourth at sixty-five, then Welch at fifty-nine, C E, Colrain Elementary at fifty-one, Hopper Heights at forty. So, I think if you would ask the general public, they would think the north end of the district is the higher free and reduced numbers, and it's just not so. We have some very high numbers right next to our, in this area, in this community. What we want to do is we want to reduce the amount of students in Colrain Elementary. So you might want to say, well, why do you want to do that? Well, the first thing is, let me not alarm everyone by saying, if by reducing Colrain Elementary, we want to go from about nine hundred to six fifty, they still would go to their middle school that they would go to now, and it would still go to the same high school that they would go to now. So this does not change their secondary school experience. Why did we want to reduce Colrain Elementary? I'll talk to you again about what our big master plan was after we built these three schools. We decided to go along with OFCC funding, and what you do is you bank money as you go through the building process, so, Chris and I are pretty much a hundred percent positive we will have seventeen million dollars banked for a new K to A Colrain L, Colrain Middle Campus. We know that it was about twenty-four million to build a nine hundred student campus, so if we can reduce Colrain L, then why would we not want more taxpayers' childrens to get into these new schools that are state-of-the-art, outstanding, classrooms, facilities, technology, everything you can dream of? Why would we not want to remove them out of a building where, even with window air conditioning, it still gets hot, you have smaller classrooms, it would be a chance to move some of those kids out and give them an opportunity to attend one of our new schools. So, the Colrain L area, as you look at this map, is that brown area up to the left, the green at the bottom is Hopper Heights, the red between the green and the brown is Struble, the orange is Taylor, and the blue is the P R E Welch area. So, as we look at this map, and we, we look at, what we did is we got Dan Bolden, who is in charge of transportation, Bob is the board member who participated in the redistricting group, myself, Darryl, Jenny, Amy, and Brenda, and what we tried to do is conversive training to give us numbers of how many kids were in each of those colored populations. each of those colored populated areas. We're not 100% that they're exact, so we are double checking, triple checking because the key here is to not have to come back and revisit this every year. We want to make sure that once we change the boundaries, we're not coming back every year because of less growth, moving in, moving out. If you look as it is up there right now, the numbers will show that currently Colrain Elementary has 958 students in. Monford Heights, 610. I don't have the exact on P R E. But if we start combining Welch and P R E in the blue area, that would put, if versa train is correct, it would put 894 students in the new P R E site. If we would combine the numbers for Taylor, we would have 566 students in the new Taylor site. And if we leave Struble Elementary as is in the new Struble site, it would have 959 students in. So we have one that is basically 350 off. We have Struble is basically 60 to 70 above what we would like them to be. And P R E, which is pretty perfect. So we are starting to look at neighborhoods in the Colrain area, the Struble area, and the Monford Heights area. And we're also going over in a little part of the Pleasant Run area, over by Lowe's in that area. And we're trying to see if we pull subdivisions out who have continuous growth in turnover or not aging, we can get the numbers pretty close to what we consider to be close to ideal. If P R E at 894, Struble would be about 884. And our goal would be to have Taylor end up around 850. We want Monford Heights to stay a clean feeder. We want to make sure that whatever many sections of first, second, third, fourth, and fifth they have, they have the same kindergarten so you have a clean feeder system. Right now, the numbers I read to you, the 894 of P R E, the 950 of Struble, those are interdistrict, those are kids coming back to their home school. We have a lot of interdistrict transfers that have been granted to the Colrain Elementary School and the Monford Heights Elementary School. Some of them are legitimate. It's daycare issues and they request transfers. Usually when that occurs, the parents provides the transportation or they have a daycare person that can pick the child up. What we want to do with an effort to save money is to keep all students at their home school. This will help save tremendously in transportation. It will also take that special ed kid that's been fussed all the way across the district for years because Monford Heights had air conditioning and an elevator and the other schools have not had an elevator or not had air conditioning. We have divided the schools with our students with disabilities so that we can service all units and all programs that we have in special education. I think it's just important to look as many ways as we can as how we save money. And this is just one part, putting kids in buildings. The next part is you've got to develop three tiers of transportation and starting times and what's going on. And for that to occur, we also have to work with our prokeo schools. So it's going to require us to sit down with our prokeo schools, have some meetings, talk to a school or two about changing a time, moving into a different tier so that we can run the tiers at different times. So ideally, you know, right now, we run a tier for our middle schools and we'll run, I think White Oaks around 740 Houston, Colrain's around 610, maybe 590, and Pleasant Run's around 7 something also.
That's going to be the same. That's not changing. But what is changing is three 900 elementaries. That's a lot. So it's going to require more drivers. It's going to require us to change some things around. Remember, when this is all said and done, we'll have five elementaries, three middle schools, and the two high schools. So we hope, and when I say more drivers, that it would take more drivers for that tier. It doesn't mean we'll be hiring more drivers. We can still bus and maintain savings by keeping the same amount. But there's still a lot to go into it. The hardest part right now is verifying the numbers that are showing up. And as Bob knows, versa trans pretty on when you use it. But we still have to verify that the numbers we are showing in each colored area are legitimate and that if we're going to move a subdivision, you have to look at, or it's not even, we're not even moving subdivisions. It's what streets can we move that have consistent enrollment? The good thing about the area over, and somebody help me with the name over by Lowe's, the Yacht Club. If you look at that area, that's a rental area that changes over. It continues to have flow of families in and out. We're not talking that many families are there anyway, but...
Lot of elderly.
Yeah. But it is a consistent number that we can see in our ADM from year to year. So as we continue to look at that, that would be one area. Another area, Struble. Another area, Colrain L. Because again, the goal is to get Taylor to a manageable number because 566 is not acceptable. Now, the other thing that this will do, and we will start talking to the teachers about, but it's got to go to the board first, is that what I'm telling you we're going to do is if we're going to move students out of Colrain L to Taylor, then we're going to have to move teachers out of either Colrain L or Monford Heights and give them the option of going to Taylor, teaching in a new school. It only makes sense to lower Colrain L numbers. It gives us a better setting in three to four years when OFCC numbers comes up and we can then determine the size of the building we need for a K-8 campus and it won't be as much as what we currently are looking at now. So I wanted to bring to your attention the process we're doing. Bob, Darrell, Chris, Jenny, anybody feel free to chime in. Any questions you folks have? And Mark, that includes you and Joe also.
We do this, how much notice will we give our families?
My hope is to have this somewhere close to being done by mid-January, end of January, and then I will schedule community meetings, not just at the school, but anywhere I can go to meet with parents, roll it out, show them what's going on, and take any questions and every question. And then have a final board approval to you by March because then we have staffing issues we have to do. We need routes for buses. And we can start working on that simultaneously, but that would be the goal.
So would we be eliminating all interdistrict transfers?
No, I, I think that's still an option, but a parent will know that when they request that, if they live over on Pippin Road and they want to go to Monford Heights because Grandma lives right behind Monford Heights, they know that we will not provide transportation for that and they'll take care of that. So no, it does not eliminate all. We, we've discussed, because realistically, what you're going to do is about take a section out of each grade level at Colrain Elementary. So Little Johnny's been with Little Jimmy since kindergarten, first, second, third grade. Now they might be split because of the subdivision we take. It's still the new school. There are huge benefits and factors. We are going to bus them. I, I think we're losing midday and that's a little concern for our drivers, but I think now we can bus more. So we're going to be able to take away those dangerous streets that I hate to cross and Bob knows well. Pippin, Kemper Road, getting to Pleasant Run Middle, Pleasant Run L, those are some dangerous places that we have walkways and they do things. But there are some things that we can do because the buses are already going in that area. It might work out that we can actually pick up more kids. And if you have any questions or if you think of anything or a community member has a question, feel free to send it to me and I'll be glad to answer it. All right. The next item is a curriculum and instruction item. It is ELA curriculum adoption, six through eight study sync. I believe there is a handout and I'm going to turn it over to Jenny, blessed on this.
Thank you. You have a handout in front of you. Just wanted to present tonight from the curriculum department, the six-eight study sync program is an item for information. Susan Willoughby Crawford, our ELA specialist, has been working with teams of teachers actually in grades six through 10 since early, or probably late summer, early fall. And they have been implementing and piloting the study sync program as well as another program, a Pearson program. What happened is, is that things started to move pretty quickly at the middle school level. When they started looking at the programs, there was a clear, there's a clear difference between these programs. The teachers love it. They're ready to just, let's go. So in an effort to really get the right materials into the hands of our students, we are presenting this as an item for information right now for six through eight. One of the things that happened is that study sync is an online program. We've never really been able to get our teachers on board with using a strictly online program because the students didn't have access to computers. With going one-to-one at the middle school this year, they, it just really gave them the opportunity to, to use the program, to dig into it and realize how nice it is to have an online program. Just the flexibility that it gives you, the ability to access all different kinds of texts, not having a book that you're tied to. The other thing is, is that things are updated on a yearly basis. So even if we do a six-year kind of online license with this, every year they can update the program and we'll get the benefit of that. We don't have to go buy new books and things. So what it, what you have here is you have an outline of the actual process that they went through with the team and some of the data that they've collected. We also, as part of our curriculum adoption and our board policy, say that we take it to the parents. We're presenting this to you to take a look at. I don't have materials for you, right? Because it's an online program. What I do have is at the end of her presentation that she put together, there is a demonstration login. So you have a username, the, the site, a username, a password, and that allows you to get into anything that the teachers and students can get into. So I encourage you to take a look at that before the next board meeting. If everything goes the way we think it's going to, we are also taking it to the parents this week. We're going out to some events and setting up some, you know, computers so that they can take a look at it. And we have a feedback process and we're going to be giving feedback. Like I said, if it goes the way we think it's going to, we will be presenting this for approval at the, at the January meeting. That's why I wanted to get this into the hands of our new board members also so that you could also take a look at it. You know, we're, we're excited about it. The teachers are excited about it. If in fact, we are able to adopt this program, if we move forward with that, the company has also given us access to the program for the remainder of the year for all of our students and teachers at no cost so that we can actually get it into the hands of our students and teachers to keep, to start using it, to get used to it, so that we'll be ready to start next year full force with it. As far as the, you might ask, you said 610, but you're only bringing the six-eight. One of the stumbling blocks we, we kind of came upon with our high school teachers is access to computers. It's hard to really jump in to a program when you don't have the computers to really use it with all your students. We have a limited number of English I and English II teachers. And so what we did was we also got the company to agree to have all of our teachers take, you know, some of our other teachers take a look at it. So we're working to get more technology into the hands of our students and teachers in English I and II in January. They're going to spend some time in the third quarter taking a look at it and if it, and if they do like it, I mean, a lot of them like it. Some of them are just skeptical because they haven't had a chance to have those computers in their classroom. We may be making a decision probably at the end of the third quarter, beginning of the fourth quarter with nine and 10. So, but I encourage you to get on there. And if you have any questions, you know where to find me. We'll be happy to answer any questions or talk, and Susan would be happy to talk to anybody about it. So, any questions about that?
I encourage all of us to get on there and check it out and make sure we call Jenny and ask.
And the next op, or item is proposal for the 2018 board meeting dates. This is just information only. I've already heard back from a couple of you that one date won't work. So I put a calendar together of dates, starting with January 8th. After tonight, I will then forward it out again to Jim, Pam, Bob, Joe, and Mark. And I need to make sure that I get Joe and Mark a school district email because that's the only way we can send things out to you. So if you're not set, if you're not set up, I'll have someone call you and set that up and let you know what you need. Please.
I've got an email from, not so sure that we've got them set up.
So they are good to go now? Great. Then we need to make sure you need to, they know how to log in. Chris, if you can make sure they contact, make sure they have a password and all that. And then I will forward this back out to you. So please look for it. I know some of you have already scheduled vacations. The only other thing I will put on there that will be a change is we keep Monday nights because we have other board members that are on Butler Tech boards and other things. But there is a general push that a lot of folks have been talking about to move board meetings to 6:30 because of ending time. So that, I don't care what we do, but I'm going to offer that out there to see if 6:30 works better than seven, see what you all would like. It is your meeting. Pam is the president who runs the meeting for this one and then after elections, whoever the president runs it then. But it's your guys' meeting. It's not my meeting. You set the dates. You set the times. So I will continue to share that out with you.
I just want to point out one thing. November 12th is probably when the OSBA conference is. Because that's the...
I, we had, I didn't, I'm not sure they're going to keep that same Sunday, Monday, Tuesday format.
Oh, really?
So we're hearing it may change, but that's a good point. We could probably just avoid that week to be safe.
That Tuesday meeting is a Butler Tech meeting, the third Tuesday of the month.
Oh, the one where we're going to do a work session? That can be changed. Okay. And that's what I need to know. So if you guys could keep letting me know if there's any conflicts and we'll put it on for information or action on the January 8th. Have it all solved by then hopefully.
That's the day after President's Day. The week before that, I'll be out of town.
All right. Thank you. Lastly is my superintendent update. Michael touched on this a little bit. I just wanted to let everyone know that we, I did send in opposition to House Bill 200. Just in case you aren't aware, the House Bill 200 expands vouchers to chartered, non-public schools. These changes would mean chartered, non-public schools would receive more funding per pupil than many of our public school districts across the state. These vouchers are also available regardless of how the local school district performs. State money should not be used to fund schools that are not held to the same accountability and mandates of the public schools is why I sent it. I've already had Mr. Seitz respond and Mr. Brenner, who sponsored the bill. Part of it's already been removed.
They said they...
Oh, very receptive. Bill said they've already removed part of it and are going back after it. Andrew Brenner was very receptive considering he is the one who put it out there, so both...
And he didn't think about any of that before he put the bill up?
It all depends on who's in his pocket, I guess. I don't know. But I am just pleased that both responded because that tells me they are listening. So I will continue to work with you folks and, and make that a bigger angle for 2018 so we can be more vocal in what's going on up there and try to get more local control back here. So it doesn't mean that all of you have to participate, but if you'd like to, there's going to be avenues where we can do that. Lastly, Michael and Chris, it's been a pleasure. Last time I get to work with you as a superintendent, I appreciate your support. I cannot thank you for how much you've done for the children of this district as somebody who graduated from here and grew up from here and knows what it's back, like to come back to a community and be a part of it. Just very appreciative of what you guys have done. So thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Okay, for all of you out in the audience there, this is the time if anybody has any questions regarding anything that was discussed tonight's meeting. Okay. It, it probably be better because we have had some people say that if they're watching it on TV, they, they can't hear. These are questions regarding things that were discussed.
I wanted to ask a few questions about the hiring. And I, I listened to all the statistics. I think, you know, a lot of what I've heard is very consistent with frankly trends that have been happening for, for a long time. But I just, I'm curious as if there was any, any statistics done on a local level? I heard the statistics on the state and national level, but not so much here, what's going on in our county. Do you have anything on that or is there any data available for that?
More specifically, what are you data on?
On the, on the trends and the makeup, the, in terms of hiring African-Americans or other minorities, what that looks like in comparison to other local districts? I know we talked about all the percentages, you know, across, you know, the state and national, but we didn't really get into what's happening here in our city. So I think if we have a better understanding of that, then I think that that would help some of us navigate in, in terms of our understanding where we need to go and what else, you know, needs to happen on this level.
I can, I mean, I can certainly get that. I don't have that data now, but I can certainly ask the personnel directors around the area.
That would be awesome. That would be great.
Are you looking for how many are hired each year or what their...
The turnover, the retention. Current staffing, the retention, retention, I'm sorry, retention. All of it would be great.
I can certainly reach out.
Thank you.
I think the important thing with that is there's not a warehouse to get that, so we'll have to reach out and we can...
we'll have to reach out and we can only get back whatever people are willing to give.
Sure. And that's why I said, you know, is it available? I wasn't sure, you know. I know that, you know, there's, the states, they track all of that stuff.
I thought you had said you tried once and you didn't get a very big response. Because we had had that question a lot earlier from other folks, and they're just not willing to come forward with that data. You're not going to find many school districts that will just put up there what we just did.
And I also wanted to ask another question, or just point something out. I mean, I don't know if you all know that much about me. I'm from Springfield Township. I actually went to Mount Healthy. And I graduated from there in '92, then went to Wright State, graduated there. And my father actually had a medical practice in Fintertown for a number of years. And so I noted that Dr., you mentioned at the last meeting, some statistics, I talked about the retention of African-American doctors and the, or the education. I think you cited a 2% statistic. And I, it just, it made me think a lot about some things that were brought up back then and also tonight. And I think one of the things that we may be missing as a district is how are we connecting with African-American professionals in the district? And I mean by that, I mean educated professionals. And we talk about, you know, African-Americans need to see people that look like them and things like that in the school. That is not new information. And I think that's been known. And I think that there are a lot of African-American professionals in the district who are very concerned about that and actually who are willing to step up and put themselves in positions, and they're willing to make themselves available to the classrooms to help with that. I know that there is a shortage of African-American teachers. I have also done my own quote-unquote "research," informally obviously, but I think it's important to let you guys know, I reached out to Pam in an email with this as well a few months ago, that I also think, in addition to the financial piece of this, it was shared with me, and I didn't, I didn't know this, but I have several friends who are teachers in Cincinnati, in, in other districts, both suburban and urban, and that, and some of them know each other, some of them do not. Also, I have a close family friend who is also a retired principal. And they shared with me that Northwest, whether it's intentioned or not, has a history or a reputation, if you will, of not hiring African-Americans. And so I think what happens with that, and I'm not saying that that's the truth or not, I don't know. I'm, I don't do the hiring. But I'm saying that if we, perception is reality, and if we have that perception out there, then how many people are not applying that otherwise maybe would? And I, I just think that that's something maybe we need to think about and perhaps address that with our marketing or with our recruiting. And I think that you do have, I mean, you've seen some of the people, they're not here tonight, but I think you guys have seen some of the people that have come in the last few weeks. Many of them I've actually, I went to high school with, and it was like a little mini Mount Healthy reunion seeing some of them up here. But they're all educated professionals, and, and why not reach out to them more to engage them as well? I know we have African-American business, businesses, very successful ones in the community. We have doctors in the community. Unfortunately, one just left. She just, she's a pediatrician, and she was at Welch. Her daughter was at Welch, and they moved to Texas unfortunately. But I just think that, you know, Diane is an engineer by, or a civil engineer, I'm sorry, an industrial engineer. When we talk about having African-Americans or other minorities, so we can, so these kids can see them, I think, starting at very young ages in the elementary schools, that we really should get back to grassroots, like career days or things like that, of that nature. Because if kids see a black teacher, but if they see a black doctor, they see a black engineer and so on, they're more likely to say, hey, you know, that could be me in 20 years. Those small minute things matter. I think another thing that we need to make a distinction between is, you know, and I don't think it's just you guys, I'm not picking on anybody here, because I don't want you to think that. But I think there's just a tendency to just think, to not, to not always break down groups. I think sometimes we look at groups as being one, this one monolithic piece, and we're not all that way. I can tell you, I don't come from a disadvantaged background. So sometimes I feel like I'm lumped, not necessarily, I'm not blaming you, I don't want you to think that, but I'm lumped into like coming from a disadvantaged background, which I do not come from. But maybe I have some better insights to relate to kids, even if they come from those backgrounds, say, in the classroom. If I'm just there and they see somebody that looks like them, but I may not come from there, from where they're coming from, but I can speak proper English, I can help them with reading and writing, I can speak articulately in front of them, those things matter to those kids. I, they're going to relate to me more. When I was in, you know, I think we have some phenomenal teachers in the district, but I can tell you that when I was in the classroom, there were some problem children in there, and I kind of knew who they were right away in the classroom. And I think that they, I was able to communicate to them and relate to them in ways that others couldn't necessarily do. And it's just because of who I am. So I think what we need to do is rely heavily on some of our more professional-type parents and thing, and people that have, you know, clear understanding of some of the differences and maybe are a little more sensitive to some of those cultural differences. And I think we need to really get back to those kinds of very basic things that don't necessarily cost anything in the classroom, more on a grassroots level in the elementary schools. And I think that, you know, if we're all working together, we can, as parents, a lot of us are willing to help bridge some of those gaps, and we want to. So I just want to throw that out there. And then, let's see, I have one more thing, guys, and then I'm done. I wanted to talk a little bit about, I heard about the bus driver thing and with the redistricting and how that possibly could require more bus drivers. Are we on track on to hire anymore? Are we still at a shortage?
No. More bus drivers to drive during a specific tier, not to hire more bus drivers.
So you're, so, okay, so the staffing won't necessarily, the staffing need won't necessarily change?
Correct.
Okay. That scared me a little bit.
No, no. It's just you need different amounts at each tier. So one person, they might leave home at 5:30 because they start at 6:00. We won't need that for the early tier, but for that second, third tier, we might need more drivers in that area.
Gotcha. Okay. All right.
I don't know if you kind of need to go, we changed the hours, get yourself two bus drivers.
I did get that, and I was sharing that stuff on social media like crazy.
That's going to be a...
Trying.
Thank you. And that's going to be a big, big effort, force of attracting new drivers.
It already is.
That's good. That's good. That's really good. And then I have some others, but I'll talk to Tom. I have another thing that I don't want to talk about here. And that's really all I have. And I just want to really, you know, harp on that. I think, I'm glad, I'm really excited about the diversity committee, and I'm hoping a lot of good things come out of that, that will be implemented in the schools. I think it's necessary. But you know, the interesting thing is, is, you know, I deal with black, white, whatever, everybody. And when, when you really get out in the community and start talking to people, it's amazing to me how many people are supportive of that, that aren't even minorities. So I think that there's a lot of people out there who kind of feel the need for it, so that's a good thing to see. And that's all I have. So thanks, you guys, for listening. Thank you.
Thank you. You took the meeting. Kind of along with Mike and our comments. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we're going to move to board member comments. Chris?
Okay, Pam, I'm going to take a few extra minutes here tonight. First thing, you guys, is now, I know the buildings aren't finished, but for the last nine months, I've been going out to Pleasant Run every week to take pictures without a tripod with my iPhone and using landmarks. My main landmark got blocked when they built the gym. This is a time-lapse video of Pleasant Run from groundbreaking up until Saturday as I'm leaving the board. Unfortunately, I'm not going to be able to continue to the final product in the summer. But this is on YouTube, if you want to watch it again. And with that, Chris, if you'd show the video, it's about two minutes long.
There you go.
Chris, you can still continue that and then come back.
Jim, it's winter time in the flying club that's right past there, my little RC club. We don't do much flying in the winter, so it's a good, good time to break off. Okay, I have some comments I want to make. First of all, Pam, isn't, aren't these meetings better when we're not at each other's throats?
Absolutely.
Things have never been healthier with the school district. I've been here through six superintendents, if you count one of our superintendents, he stayed three days. He came and he left, or he just stayed in his position then left, but he was a great guy and it just wasn't for him. But I can say, and I mean this sincerely, that the administrative team that we have here, starting with Todd and Amy and you folks, all of the support staff, this is the best team that I have seen in, in my three terms on the Northwest School Board. Absolutely, you guys are professionals. We are on the upswing, we have three new schools being built, our test scores are rising. When I left the last time, I took a six-year break, I was on two terms, took a six-year break, then came back for four years. When I left last time, I was glad to be leaving. I was like, thank God, I'm off this thing, walked out and didn't think much about it and then got back in four years ago. And I can tell you that tonight, I, I am sad to be leaving right in the middle of the construction process. You know, Todd has done a wonderful job, he was a great hire, Amy, I mean, you are the two that we hired as a board. You guys are fantastic and I'm going to, even though board members just sort of disappear, I'm going to be keeping an eye on things. And I might have to send some emails, but you won't be seeing me in the meetings. Second thing, I want to thank the voters for electing me three times. The honor to serve here, I'm the only board member ever to serve who never had any children. I didn't do it for anything other than to pay back the great experiences I had from petting horses across the fence at Monfortite School in the early nineteen-sixties to making a half-court shot as time expired, playing Anderson. I was like third string, we were losing by twenty-five.
You didn't have to say that.
But I, I had, there were three seconds left and the other guards said, Chris, shoot it, I'm at half-court. And that thing just went choo right in Anderson High School. So instead of losing by twenty-four, they didn't have three points back then, we lost by twenty-two to track. And of course, the highlight of my career with Northwest Schools as a student was WNSD and being the station manager my senior year. There's so many good things happening here, the new schools, the state scores are improving, this is a, this is on the upswing. But as a captain in the Air Force, son of a World War II veteran, grandson of a World War One veteran, and great-great-grandson of a Civil War veteran, you know, I'm pretty conservative. And there are some things that concern me about our young people today that it's not, I think our kids at Corrine and Northwest are as good as any children, young adults you'd find anywhere. But what concerns me is things like when I heard two weeks ago that fifty percent of millennials would prefer that our system was socialist or communist. I don't think my dad would be real happy if he was still alive, if, to hear that, or a good friend of mine who, who was wounded in Vietnam, I don't think he'd be very happy to hear that. And I, I don't know where the culture's headed. Are we past the tipping point? I don't know, but it scares me. I am also concerned that it's almost, you're afraid to say Merry Christmas to people. I, I, I just, you know, I just, where are we headed? I go to church and I'm one of the youngest people there and, you know, my age, I graduated in nineteen-seventy-four. So I just think culture, our culture's changing and I'm not sure social media, which I'm a part of, is really a good thing. I hope people remember me as two things. First, that I only missed one meeting out of two-hundred-and-fifty or more and that was the day my dad died in two thousand and fourteen. I wasn't the greatest in going to some of the extracurricular stuff, you know, the dance, the luncheons, the breakfasts and the awards things, but when it came to voting, one meeting I missed, and I encourage our new board members to, they ran and you have an obligation. And one mistake I made when I first came on, and I know Joe brings a lot to the table with his teaching background and Mark certainly, who I know brings tons of experience with his business background, you don't micromanage. Our job is not to like, you know, somebody calls and then you call the teacher who did something to their kid. Your job is not to be in the schools and sorting through care, or care plans, I'm thinking of my medical background, teaching plans. Your job is to refer to the right person, if it's Chris or Amy or Todd or Stephanie, Daryl, you know, Jenny, you know, you refer to the people and don't micromanage. And that was a mistake I had when I came on. I thought I knew it all, in reality, I knew nothing. So that would be one thing I would caution you on, let the people who run the district that we've hired do that, you're the middleman. You send it, just an email, these people will get back to you. Like to thank Jim and Bob and Pam, Michael, it's been a pleasure, we ran together. This is a very, very good man right here. And I will miss this and I will conclude by just simply saying Merry Christmas to you all.
Thanks, Chris. Michael?
I have to follow that. Chris, Chris, it's been a great pleasure serving with you and it's been, been a great pleasure serving with Pam and Jim and Bob and began my term with, with Ann on the board. You know, I'd just like to thank Todd and Amy who do a great job for us every day, administrative office leadership team do a great job for us every day. You know, the biggest things you do as a board member, hire a superintendent, hire a treasurer, and we did both of those and I think we made two outstanding hires during my tenure on the board. And we also have to adequately fund the district and make sure that our children are in a warm, safe, dry environment. And we took great steps to that with the building plan, so we passed a bond levy and we passed an operating levy just in the past couple of years. Those will be on, will be an ongoing challenge as long as the school funding system continues the way it is. Like to thank the voters for the four years that they gave me to serve, it was a very humbling experience. Thank you to the teachers, the bus drivers and the staff who come in every day and do a great job for our students and are really the, they're, I always say that they're, you know, our school buses are our walking billboards, our teachers are our walking billboards, really helping increase the favorable view of Northwest Schools out there. You know, I, I came onto the board with a strong belief in, in that, you know, career tech was really the way of future, there was a, where the demand for jobs were, we're seeing that now. We have excellent programs here. I've really just come away from this experience even more convinced that career technical education, not just in the specific fields that we, we know it in now, is the way of the future, but I think it's just a little learning style, it's really going to, really going to expand and I think we're really leading the way here with the district at Butler Tech. You know, obviously, District's, you have its challenges, diversifying as we've spoken about, maintaining our funding, you know, increasing favorable view of the district. I'd like to see how the levies pass when, during my four years, hope I contribute to that in some way. You know, I offer congratulations to Mark and congratulations to Joe. You two have a very big job, but Chris is right, it's not one to, to micromanage and get involved with on a day-to-day basis, but it is, it's, it's an important job and everywhere you go, you are a representative of, of the district as well. And I also like to congratulate Pam on her election to a sixth term. Pam has been on this board since nineteen-ninety-seven and although I don't have the mad Photoshop and, and, you know, Apple movie skills that Chris either does, I, I'm a little handy with, with Google and with other research engines and so I wanted to take us back in time to nineteen-ninety-seven, the year that Pam first joined the board. President of the United States was, was Bill Clinton, the governor was George Winovich, the stock market, the Dow Jones crossed eight thousand for the first time, is now at twenty-four thousand. When Pam was first elected, no one had heard of Monica Lewinsky. Princess Diana, Mother Teresa and Johnny Versace had all recently passed away. The Spice Girls were tearing up the pop charts. Kids who received diplomas from, from Pam with the most recent graduation weren't born. Willie Green led the Reds in home runs in nineteen-ninety-seven. Yes, Jeff Shaw led the team in saves. The Bengals were coached by Bruce Coslett, the Reds were managed by Ray Knight. Jeff Blake was the starting quarterback, Cincinnati Bengals. Darnay Scott was the leading receiver. But both the Reds and the Bengals finished with losing records and failed to make the playoffs. So I guess something's never really changed. Thank you.
Thank you.
The last thing I have, Chris already has one, but Michael here is a lifetime past athletic and extracurricular basketball.
Well, thank you very much and may use this more than you think I will.
Back in those days, we were listening to the Spice Girls. Okay, I'll.
I'd like to congratulate the Corrine High School football team on a, on a great season. I know it didn't end the way they wanted it to, but being top four in the state is a very successful year. A lot of, a lot of football teams across the state like to be in their shoes, so congratulations to Tommy and his players and, and his staff for a great season. Like to, once again, thank Mr. Campbell and Kristen for a great showing tonight again of what we've, we've been able to accomplish for our students. It's really great to see students get so many college credits before they have to leave and start taking it out of their own pocket. And like to thank Ms. Jackson and her crew for coming to entertain us early in the meetings with the strength, so other than that, Merry Christmas.
Jim?
Yeah, I'd just like to tell everybody Merry Christmas and I want to thank Michael for your service in your four years and Chris, your three terms on. It's, this is not easy. People don't, they think they can come in and oh, it's easy, it's not. You know, being on two boards, being on a Butler Tech board, there's ten board members if you have to deal with not five. So it's, you know, it's, it's tough and appreciate you give up a lot of time and you're not doing it for the tag, for sure. So I just want to thank you guys and really appreciate it. And then I did want to, one other comment, one of our students up at the biomedical science, Tara Sprandl, she's a Corrine kid, she is one of five kids that got the U.S. Presidential Scholar, she's a semifinalist in the state of Ohio, so she'll, she could have a chance to be, you know, go on to the national with that and she's on track to have twenty-four college credits. So Butler Tech has had two of those kids in the years we've been with them and both of them have been from our district. So that's, you know, that goes a long way, how, how well our kids are doing at Butler Tech and, and you saw it today with Dave Campbell with that engineering program and then you can go right down the line with every other program, how well our kids are doing. And when I went down to Nashville and we ran in, I ran into, they had guys at Festo and they knew our kids, they knew our district, so we're doing the right things and we need to keep going.
And just to piggyback on that, with Tara representing Corrine in our district, Carlos Boyd was our representative from Northwest High School last year and what makes it even more special, come from two completely different programs. So it's not like just one program's all up here, they're, they're all up there. So two out of five or, or one of them and there's only five positions of that all over the country, that's amazing. So I want to congratulate Tara too. And then also just to thank Michael and Chris. Chris, the last however many years has, has, has been good? I think we've, more often than not, and even behind closed doors, surprisingly, you and I've been on the same page on most everything.
We have, Pam.
And hearing you talk and admit about the importance of not micromanaging, I mean, is huge because I think there is a misconception of what a school board member is. I didn't know what a school board member was when I got on here either. So I think something our board can be proud of is we did hire, we made two great hires and both of them are going to be here for the next at least four or five years and will lead us, continue going in the right direction and I'm very proud to know that it was our board that hired them. So I want to wish you good luck and it sounds like I might be seeing you on Friday nights operating the scoreboard at Corrine.
Just maybe.
And Michael, you too, it is a lot and when you have kids and that makes it challenging, especially little kids. I remember going to bed several times with my daughter falling asleep in my arms because I'm talking with an upset parent and didn't finish reading the bedtime story and it, it, you struggle with that. So we hope that you continue to be our support out there and we still continue to use that past and see your sons at, at games and, and concerts and everything else, so I want to wish you the best of luck.
Thank you.
To Joe and Mark, I look forward to January and starting off on a nice, good foot and moving forward and continuing, being together when these brand-new buildings open and working on the diversity committee, it's, it's so good to hear the dialogue, I mean, that's, that's huge. So I look forward to two thousand and eighteen. And I too want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, looking forward to a happy, exciting new year in this school district, can't wait to those ribbon cuttings of those schools and then on to, to new K-8 hopefully in a couple of years. So with that, I believe we have one more piece of business. We need a motion to approve the addendum for the superintendent's contract.
So moved. Second?
Motion second, are there any questions? Motion passes five to zero. With that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Okay.
It's ready for you.
I made the vote. And now I vote.
Okay. Motion passes five to zero.